The time is now nine AM on April seventh, two thousand and nineteen. We will call to order the City Council meeting with the City of Statesboro jury. We would like to have our invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilman Jeff Yaw.
Father, as always, we just thank you this day. We thank you for the rain and we thank you for the winds, challenging as they can be at times. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together, to gather as people who care about this community. I pray, Lord, that decisions we make will glorify you, that will serve all of us, not just those of us that sit up here, but all of us as a community, humbly and faithfully, and again, make decisions that glorify you. And we pray all of this in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. What a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will move down to Agenda Item Three, which is recognition of public presentations. Agenda Item Eight under three is presentation by Keepin' Statesboro Beautiful's beautiful coordinator, Megan Jane Jackson.
So, Keep Statesboro Beautiful received the Governor's Circle Award for making for the Beautiful Foundation, and it received the award for its outstanding achievement in community beautification and environmental sustainability. The award presented annually by the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation in conjunction with its annual legislative day at Georgia Capitol, recognizes exemplary performance in literature, waste minimization, and community greening. To qualify for the Governor's Circle Award, affiliates must be in good standing with Keep America Beautiful, the national nonprofit that oversees state and local programming. Requirements include conducting an annual litter index, calculating the affiliate's cost benefit ratio, and engaging volunteers to take greater responsibility for their community environment. Additionally, the affiliate must be an active member of the Georgia Network. So, we received this award, and it's basically kind of a big achievement, especially in the first year of an affiliate being present. So, I think that's really great. So, I have the frame here. Do you want to do a photo or?
Absolutely.
We can council, and that's all I have.
We're going to celebrate that, council. Slide correction for our minutes. That's K S B V. All right, good deal. Pass that on to the staff. Absolutely. We want to thank Megan and her team of volunteers, all of the hard work that they do. Many of the great things that happen in our cities because of dedicated people like Megan and the people that surround her. So, again, we want to thank her. We'll move down to Agenda Item Three B, which is a proclamation recognizing sexual assault awareness and prevention month. Mr. Peter Grant, you will come forward as our reading proclamation. The proclamation is presented on behalf of the City of Statesboro and American Council, and the proclamation reads as follows. A proclamation by the American and City Council of Statesboro, Georgia Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month, whereas the National Sexual Violence Resource Center designates the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month to raise public awareness about sexual violence, and whereas sexual assault is a widespread issue with effects, which affects individuals of all races, genders, ages, and economic backgrounds. And whereas, on average, three thousand, three hundred thousand twenty-one and five hundred sexual assaults occur in America each year, according to the Rape Abuse and Interest National Network in 2017. And whereas, the Teal House Statesboro Regional Sexual Assault and Child Advocacy Center has served two hundred and forty-seven victims of sexual assault in Statesboro and the surrounding areas since two thousand and seven. And whereas, victims of sexual assault are at an elevated risk for mental health concerns, substance use disorders, relationship impairment, pregnancy, and sexually transmitted infections. And whereas, the City of Statesboro is dedicated to promoting the safety and well-being of community members and support survivors of sexual violence in their journeys towards healing and recovery. And whereas, through increased awareness, education, and efforts for prevention, we can come together to support survivors and work toward the goal of ending sexual violence in our community. Therefore, I, Jonathan McCollum, Mayor of the City of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand and nineteen to be Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. You want to say anything, Ms. Grant?
I do. My name is La-Petera Grant, and I am the Executive Director of the Teal House. It's not only, we don't only serve adults, but we are a child advocacy center as well. And I do thank you for all the victims and survivors that have come through the Teal House.
Thank you, Father.
Okay. Thank you. And he's like mine. Everybody ready? On the count of three, two, one, go.
You know, I think the Teal House and its staff is a great example of serious work that goes on within our community, and we're very fortunate to have an organization and a team of people that's working diligently in regards to a serious issue as sexual assault. You know, just to kind of put this into perspective, the City of Atlanta is a hub for human trafficking, and the City of Atlanta is three hours away from here. And so, as we take the opportunity to recognize this particular month, let us know that this is a very real issue that's not too far from us and is also within our own community as well. So, definitely, again, Ms. Grant, we want to thank you and your staff for the work that you do. We recognize that it may be difficult at times, but knowing that those that come in contact with you in this community, greatly appreciate what you do. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Four, which is public comments. Mr. David, you want a couple of comments? Okay, we'll move down to Agenda Item Five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the agenda April approval of minutes for our city council work sessions for March fourteenth, council minutes for March nineteenth, and executive session minutes for March nineteenth as well. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let us show that Agenda Item Five has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Six, which is the second reading and consideration of a motion to approve Orders twenty nineteen oh one, Orders Amending the Application of the City Open Container Exemption for DSDA sanctioned events.
Mayor, Council, this is a revision or an addition to Section six seventeen in the alcohol ordinance. This was initially presented as a motion to direct on March fourth, and then the ordinance revision was presented in the fashion of sending in today's agenda on March nineteenth. And this is a, this is an exception to six seventeen, which concerns open container within the City of Statesboro, and this is just saying that if an event is approved by the DSDA Board of Directors officially sanctioned by DSDA and held in an area predetermined, a predeterminary rating by DSDA and the Police Department, and also ten days has to be given notice to the Chief of Fire, Chief of Police, and City Clerk, and it also exempts DSDA from the, from the cost requirements set out. Those would be the cost requirements when the Police Department would evaluate the request for that container exemption and then determine how many, the extent of city law enforcement that would be required in order to secure such an event. So, this is a big event, a fact rating and consideration for passage this morning.
Okay. Is there any commentary from Council or any questions? Seeing that there isn't any, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, ordinance two one, two zero one nine dash oh one.
All right, is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Seven. There's a consideration of a motion to appoint Jamie Cartier to the Creek Oversight Committee. Is there any discussion by Council? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let us show that Agenda Item Seven has passed. Agenda Item Eight is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, a resolution approving applications to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, requesting two million dollars in funding from the fiscal year twenty eighteen Community Development Block grant, innovative grant program, and approval of a city financial commitment of three hundred thousand dollars from twenty thirteen's splash funds as a local match.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Recently, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, through their Community Development Block grant program, announced a collaborative grant program. This program is a, is a grant program that seeks to provide funding for transfer potential changes, and these changes include and support long-term, sustainable change. This grant opportunity was provided to us from the Creek Committee, the Mau Creek Committee, so we're grateful for their work on this project. And I believe this is an adequate and ideal funding source to help support the Creek and Mau project.
Thank you. Is there any, any commentary or questions for Council?
Total approval, do you say what?
Four million dollars.
How much are we going for after that?
Yeah, that's the max. Two million is the max.
Isn't that over two, two years, those two different draws that fall?
That part, I'm not clear on. I reached out to the coordinator, John Perry with ECA, and she told me that it's four million dollar pre-fee, and the maximum allowable per project will be two million dollars. So, that's what we're going with.
Yeah, what's the deadline?
May thirty-first is the pre-application deadline, and August thirty-first is the full application deadline.
Any further questions, Father, Council? Seeing that there isn't any, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Let us show that Agenda Item Eight has passed. We'll move down to Agenda Item Nine, which is consideration of a motion to approve Sexual Post-Formed Tour Rotation and Record Agreement.
Wonderful, Mayor Council. This is the annual record agreement. We put the record companies that choose to opt in into a rotation, and then that becomes the primary city record for that, and we get a time, so that's the annual update on that.
All right, please.
If this is the contentious thing to pass, is there anything there to change?
No, so the only thing we changed this year was the dates, just to reflect the need for this year.
Any comments from the Record folks today? Did it respond? I'm sorry, did you? I'm trying to help you out, chief, I'm trying.
Not deficient. No, we haven't had any real feedback at all from them. I think they're really happy to be on the rotation, and this does set up a number of rules that they have to follow, but that really is for the safety of the public that's having their vehicles towed, that already has. So, we haven't had any pushback in the last couple of years.
Thank you.
That's good, because I appreciate that question, because it was so contentious.
They're still contentious, just not about this. I talked to them for about an hour and a half last weekend. Very contentious about something, but not this part.
So, it's not who you want to see. All right, is there a motion to approve? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item Ten, which is consideration of a motion to direct the city attorney to grab a fore, that's regarding the program and regulation with small cell wireless technology.
Yes, Mayor Council, thank you. Prepared a brief presentation just to overview this small cell wireless technology that I'm not sure, I wasn't very familiar with a couple of weeks ago, so we got some research together on it, planning development department did, so just bear with me for a few minutes, and we'll learn a little bit about this small cell wireless technology here. Quick introduction, as I'm sure you all are aware, wireless data consumption has very, it's grown a lot over the last few years, just growing, expected to grow a lot. Going, going forward into two thousand and twenty-two, that number, that one point x byte number, one x bytes, is a million terabytes, just to put that in perspective. So, while we have, the City of Statesboro has the communications, our telecommunications ordinance, this new type of technology will require us to have a limit to it just by where it's located and just the structure and installation of the alarm. What is small cell wireless technology? In order to address this data crunch, several wireless providers are deploying small cells, the type of technology that provides broadband infrastructure. They generally refer to, they're a smaller coverage area for the signal, and they're smaller in size. The limitations or the installation generally cover a much smaller geographic area than the standard macro cell towers are the ones that you see extending up to two hundred feet, those are the traditional ones. Also, you'll see these deployed, attached to buildings, rooftops, structures in the rideaway, such as utility light poles, other street furniture, and they could also be equipped or associated with ground-mounted equipment, such as antennas, or basically battery-operated, I guess, equipment that's on the ground, that could be as large as a refrigerator. And it could be in the public rideaway or on private property. There's a couple of pictures here right there of some deployed wireless cell technology that was deployed right near our stadium for one of the recent Super Bowl events to address the data crunch that was associated with a large number of people in a small concentrated area. This lot is representative of, you know, the traditional macro cell towers that you get to see on your left-hand side, is the ones that extend far, you know, beyond the treetops, anywhere from fifty up to one hundred and ninety-nine feet. They have a much larger coverage area, but the coverage at the end of their, I guess, span starts to drop off, and they're much better situated for low-density areas. The macro cell that you see on your right, that's kind of the picture right there, they're better for the small, dense population areas, high capacity, downtown stadiums, theme parks. Those are ideal for this technology, and it's just higher quality coverage. It also kind of complements the macro cell, because it helps extend that coverage a little bit further and helps us, helps with the demand for the smaller areas. Some benefits and risks, obviously, on the benefit side, you're improving your broadband network capacity in several areas, so everyone gets the newer, faster internet service, you know, not so much as the slow, I guess, internet services out there right now. You get the tech-friendly reputation, gives the city more opportunities to deploy smart city applications. And lastly, given that eighty percent of the day, nine-in-one calls are placed via wireless phones, it's also critical to public safety to keep these wireless networks strong. Some risks that could be associated with this type of development or new technology is that these wireless providers, they want to deploy these small cells in dense urban areas, and each provider, of course, wants its own facility installed on one pole. You know, they're not going to share with the other providers, so you could have, you know, four or five utility poles in a row with this type of equipment on it, or you could have requests to co-locate onto one pole from various wireless providers. And another, another potential risk is that this technology could interfere with traffic signals and any other municipal technology in close proximity. The ground-mounted equipment could be obstructed in crowded cities' rideaway. And then the last bullet point, which we'll hit on here in a second, is there's a recent bill that just passed the House on March twenty-fifth. There's been a lot of efforts to speed up this deployment of small cell facilities, basically a big push from the wireless providers lobbyists to get this rolled out so they can start making money on this higher-speed internet. So, the three main, I guess, acts here that have been established for some time, with the exception of the one in two thousand and twelve. One is, well, two of them share a similar theme in that any request for installation to the local government, it has to be approved within a reasonable amount of time. And then, the other one, the other arching theme here is that we have to be compensated for the wireless provider's access to the public rideaway. So, when they install these, this equipment on the utility poles or the ground-mounted equipment in public rideaway that the City of Statesboro is fairly compensated for not only the use, but also the access for any maintenance that has to be done to that wireless facility equipment. So, here's a good overview of the recent bill that just passed the House on March twenty-fifth. Again, overarching principle of this legislation was to encourage small cell wireless deployment through the co-location of new equipment on already existing infrastructure, meaning they don't want to see new poles go up to the crowd, the public rideaway. So, they wanted incentivized using one pole, our existing poles for this type of equipment. So, it kind of put a shock, or I guess, an application for new timeline on us, thirty days to act on a co-location permit, meaning there, they found an existing pole which will work for them, or seventy days for a new one. If we don't act within that period of time, there's this twenty-day period with no local government action that's already approved. Another really strong point for us, it protected the store districts and residential areas, so we maintain discretion under placement of new poles in key community areas, such as these neighborhoods and residential districts, and we can also put certain design aesthetics, you know, require that to be met through stealth and concealment measures for poles or other facilities. Because this is a new technology, the bill also limits the number of permit applications that these wireless providers are allowed to make to municipalities. They limit them at first, but they'll eventually increase over time. It also hits on reasonable rideaway use fees that'll be paid annually as well as the application fees when new wireless facilities, small cell wireless facilities are requesting to be installed. And then, some expanded grounds by which permits may be denied. There's a few good ones there involving, you know, ones that don't interfere with any ongoing public works projects, failure to comply with any pedestrian vehicle or safety requirements, any other local laws that we have managing the rideaway. If the equipment sits for too long, it's basically deemed abandoned, and they have to remove it within a certain time period. And also, prevent interference with any existing utilities or equipment control devices that we have in place, protects other property owners by the rideaway. And that last one's pretty important, it shields local governments, their official employees from legal claims related to signing or location of wireless equipment. I mean, a lot of people know we don't have our own power company here, so a lot of these holders are by Georgia Power or EMC. So, just an overview of our proposed ordinance, which we plan to begin drafting and hopefully get in good enough shape to be read, have the first reading at the next council meeting. It's going to be based largely on GMA's draft model ordinance for this type of installation of infrastructure. It's specifically to address the small cell wireless deployment projects. It provides the local oversight, regulation of placement and maintenance facilities in the public rideways. It establishes regulations, it will establish regulations for installation, construction, maintenance, renewal, removal, and relocations of utility facilities. And it'll also create some minimum requirements for the permit application prior to the issue of any permit for installation. There will be a minimum aesthetic standard requirement for this type of installation to take place before it's permitted. There's three big points here. You're going to have to have some kind of utility registration from the FCC, Georgia Public Service Commission, or any other acceptable evidence of authority to operate a pole attachment agreement, whether it's a city-owned pole or it's owned by the power companies. You're going to have to show some kind of legal agreement, say, okay, you know, we agree to let you install your equipment onto this pole. And then the third one, there's going to have to be a rideaway access agreement between the city and the wireless provider, and that would be for them to allow use of the rideaway to maintain their pole and then also to install it. So, some of the, the last point here, save the best for last, like you should say, is the compensation, and this is not including permit fees, this is per site. So, any new small cell wireless facilities, just pay annually for the city rideaway use, that's a hundred dollars. If it's a new pole, that's two hundred dollars paid annually. And then, if they attach to an existing authority pole, you know, whether it's a traffic signal or a building that we own, that's forty dollars per year for wireless facility on that. Last four slides are examples, because I've pretty much told you guys a lot of narratives, just to show you guys some real-life examples here of what they look like. You can kind of see some before and after. On this one, you'll notice there was no, it's brown top to this electrical pole, whereas after there was. You also notice the additional equipment that's on the right-hand side, a little bit, you know, six feet up the pole, I guess you could say, in the right picture on the left. I don't know if you noticed it, but there's a ground-mounted back- I guess you could say, in the right picture on the left. Um, I don't know if you noticed it, but there's a ground-mounted battery that's on the opposite side of that mailbox now, that there wasn't before. Um, another example, on your left-hand side, you'll see some equipment mounted on the pole, a little bit above six feet off the ground, and then the top or on the top of that electrical pole. And then they come up with some creative ways.
How, how high is that extension that they can put up on the top? Is that six feet two, or is that, how high do they go?
Really, it's just going to be, it's going to be regulated, it'd be regulated by us, so in, in this case, uh, this was an example in, uh, Palo Alto, California, and, uh, it would have just been locally regulated based on how, how tall that, that infrastructure can go. So it'd just be up to us.
It could be ten feet, it could be six feet.
Oh, as far as percent, um, yeah, it, it, there's all different types, and we'll, we'll look, the next couple of slides, I mean, they have, they have a lot of different ways for this technology to implement it as far as what it looks like. Um, in this case, this picture is a little dated, for as, as far as technology is concerned, it's taken in early two thousand seventeen, so two years plus now. I think some things have probably, some things have probably improved. I know it hasn't seemed like a long time, but when you're talking about technology, it's...
It's a lot of native people.
So, um, so they've got a little bit, uh, you know, crafty on their ground mounted. You'll see, uh, you know, they created a bench, looks like just a bench, but really there's the same, uh, battery-powered generator under that that's serving the, uh, wireless, uh, facility that's mounted on the pole. They painted, uh, some of the boxes. You'll also see a mailbox that, uh, contains the same type of equipment, but it also can be used by the United States Postal Service as well. Um, here's a, this is bringing you guys, this is a little bit more new technology, I guess you could say, um, compared to the, uh, I guess, the ugly brown structure on the top of that level that we saw. Uh, that was, that wasn't too pleasing, but, uh, this is a little bit more what you'll see, uh, these days that's being rolled out for the small cell wireless technology. And then, a, a good graphic on kind of what's what. Uh, so the structure that you see at the top of the utility pole, that's the antenna, uh, that receives and transmits the signal to your smartphones, uh, to your, uh, really your internet router boxes inside your house, and then the cabinet that holds the equipment to process the signal, and then the locker running down below. Um, so eventually you will see, uh, where you don't have to plug your wireless router into your wall at home, the signal will come just straight from the street to your router, so you'll just be plugged into the wall, uh, essentially. And, um, that is the end of the presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. My background is real estate and finance, not wireless cell phone technology, so.
I just wondered, does the potential exist for me to control the traffic light with my phone?
No.
All right, any, any questions by council or any commentary?
Any question, reference to the, uh, names of providers who, uh, asked you to do this?
Uh, so we have had some interest from Verizon recently. And it'd just be important that we get this ordinance set up so we can regulate any potential applications that they could, uh, could send to us in the near future.
Next question after the fees, he said, how long has it been stalled?
Yeah.
Who set those fees? Is that a state thing?
It's a state, yeah.
Owen, you haven't had any, um, approach by AT&T?
No, sir.
They approached me individually with this, and I've seen most of this already.
Sure.
But, uh, again, this is, uh, we live in a, a highly concentrated, uh, campus of Georgia Southern University, and the last thing we want when the university emerges are smartphones, cell phones everywhere, is the denial of service, the busy, busy, busy. Some people are going to have those in their homes now, so I, I welcome this change, and it sounds like it's being received by the state and municipal associations, so we can buy it, with what is in the best interest of our general population in providing them what's becoming a essential service, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just want to make sure the aesthetic standards are up to par with the City and State Bureau. I think that's our main importance, but definitely welcome, sir.
Right, but it's hard to make a code.
You're correct, sir. We're going to try, though.
Another question, you may have covered it, reference to, uh, having a variety of small cells set up in the same area, and if it does affect the traffic light, how would we handle that?
Uh, it'd be, it'd be, it's not allowed in state law that it just passed, so we have to deal with it, I guess, from a legal standpoint, I'm not sure. I guess we'd have to cross that bridge when we come to it, when we receive the complaint. Uh, I'm not sure who monitors that municipal technology for the city, uh, but that'd be something that, I guess, during the review process, we really want to review it with them. So that'd probably be the police department, fire department, have to review these applications and install the small cell facilities to ensure that we didn't interfere with any existing municipal technology in place.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve? Second. All of the favor. Aye. We move on to agenda item eleven, consideration of a motion to award purchase of a CNG truck from OC Wells Ford, who submitted the loss to sponsor, uh, of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents. This truck is budgeted under the capital improvement, uh, SWD dash sixteen, and the amount of thirty dollars, that's...
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the first one we picked up truck in our, um, our landfill division, the Public Works Engineering Department. This item is over budget. Um, I am comfortable with the number that we received on that. The other two bids we received were about two thousand dollars higher. Um, I would just weight that to probably an overstatement on our part, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, our budgeting and up for it, um, but, uh, this is in an enterprise form, and we are able to make some adjustments in our expenditures to make sure we stay under budget overall. If you recall, the last council meeting, um, it's been hot and dry for you in natural gas department, where, Public Utilities Department, Natural Gas Division, where we have approved our computer bus approval of a pickup truck in that department, it's not going to, uh, it's fully filled, um, to the Public Utilities Department and our food management program, the working class, they're trying to, we have at least a small percentage of natural gas vehicles, you know, current fuel vehicles, and the city fleet program, trying to reduce our footprint and emissions. This is just one of those, one of, another one of those examples, um, in our Public Works Engineering Department. Currently, we are at all of our garbage trucks, frontline garbage trucks, the dumpster trucks, the residential trucks, they're all natural gas powered, um, through our natural gas equipment that Public Utilities Department has. We have two vehicles, uh, already, in Public Works Engineering Department that are raw fuel, um, CNG gasoline, and, um, Utilities already has one in addition to the one that they just, um, they just threw, so this will be our fifth pickup truck that will happen in the city fleet, uh, one of our motor pool vehicles, for fusion, and it's a hybrid vehicle. So we're trying to keep alternative, alternative vehicles, uh, in the small, at least a small percentage of our overall fleet program.
Jason, how, how, uh, cost-effective have those been? I know that was a decision the city made a while ago, especially when gas was high and it was flying all the way around, and natural gas was a cost-effective alternative. I know the cost of natural gas has been fairly steady, which is, which makes our budgeting process certainly easier, so, but from a, just from a repair and maintenance standpoint, how are those vehicles measuring up to the, to the older? It's not harder to gas or be...
Right, so the larger the vehicle, the, the more savings you're going to see, and the more mileage you put on the vehicle, the more savings you're going to see. So we're currently basically charging ourselves through our natural gas department, natural gas program.
Right.
Um, like a dollar and quarter gallon on, on the fuel, um, and that's, that's what the Public Utilities Department making money off that. So, um, we have had very little issues with any of our, um, with any of our CNG-powered vehicles. And, um, I haven't read any numbers, uh, recently, um, but not addition, not only addition to the, um, to the fuel savings, the fuel cost savings that we're having, particularly with garbage trucks, but also it's been a reduction in downtime for those vehicles compared to the use. So it's been good overall for the city.
So they're cleaner, cheaper, and run more efficiently?
It's great.
Try back to there.
How many garbage trucks do we have?
Any further commentary or questions for council? Seeing that there isn't any, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All of the favor. Aye. All right, so agenda item eleven is passed. We move on to agenda item twelve, which is consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a CNG truck, the gray bull, who submitted the loss to sponsor, being of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars, their purchase of this truck, using four, four-year term.
Thank you, Honored Counsel. Uh, so there's an old saying that when someone gives you a puppy, it's only free on the first day. And that's certainly true for us. So we have a, a tracking dog being donated to us, uh, but those dogs require specific kinds of kennels first in the cars, and so we need to purchase a vehicle to support the dog in that mission. Uh, and I thought it would come on board about August, and so we have some corporate funds that we'd like to use to buy that, that, that additional vehicle for the fleet to support that dog.
Any co- questions or comments by council?
Who's giving us the dog?
Uh, Michael Duncan is, is training the dog.
Dog gets his own truck, huh?
Well, we're going to stick a cop in there with him, but...
Oh, okay. It'll take Alan Mulder twenty years to get a truck, I'm just saying.
Any further questions or comments by council? Seeing that there isn't any, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All of the favor. Aye. We move on to agenda item thirteen, other business from city council. Seeing that there isn't any, um, city manager comments?
Two things, uh, right here. If you'll... Have a word?
It's like, hey, what is going to happen? Um, it's like, it's our apartment, we have two brand-new employees upstairs, and they have an office that we're super excited about. Um, they are directly behind the desk, so they can see your pretty faces, uh, Capri Shew Westbrook and Chorish Round. So, um, we looked to get an email out maybe later today with a picture and a bio and all that stuff, so we'll see lots of these to meet.
All right.
Mr. Franz moving from downstairs, isn't he?
He stole it, he stole.
He stole this.
Lady is happy, Mr. is shaking her head. Always getting to it.
Anything else, um, I'll sit a minute?
And just one other thing, Tim has, uh, has a couple of notes.
All right, Chief, how you doing?
Good.
Good morning.
Your current fire chief. Uh, a couple of quick things I just wanted to update you. We also have someone new that, um, probably is, uh, going to have a well-known face around the city. This is, uh, Stephen Hutchins. He's our new prevention officer.
How you doing?
So, uh, Stephen comes to us from Coolers. He's, uh, been in the fire service, uh, about twelve years, uh, the last five, roughly five, uh, of which he served as the fire marshal down in Coolers, so we're excited to have him, and, um, he's hitting the ground running coming in. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to do was just give you guys a, a brief update, uh, on the fire district and fire committee, uh, discussions and negotiations. Um, after following a, a, uh, meeting back in February, uh, we, we had some discussions as far as what ISO refers to as alternative water or hog water, um, which is a, uh, way to help, um, deliver services to those rural areas that may not have, uh, water systems. Um, we went back to ISO and had some conversations with them, and, and long story short, we, we have submitted some updated information, which we hope will be beneficial to the overall goal of trying to, um, apply that lower ISO classification to, uh, as many in the district as we possibly can. Uh, if you remember, we came, uh, a few months back and gave you a brief overview and, uh, some of the concerns and frustrations of folks, uh, insurance rates drastically rising, and of course, this is in the district, the city really didn't have any effect. They should have seen a, a reduction, uh, because we did draft in a class thirty-two, but the way that ISO was applying that new classification, many of the folks in the district who were receiving the lower classification lost it and went to nine, and that, that ended up being, uh, in some cases, two, three, and in some cases, four thousand dollars, uh, increases in their premiums. So, we've been working diligently as a, as a committee. Um, the county has been extremely, um, supportive and, and receptive to the things that we need to do to, to accomplish this goal, and, um, you know, we are cautiously optimistic that this is a, a good first step in achieving those goals.
Thank you, Chief. We really appreciate everything that you guys have been doing in this effort. Um, you know, we can all credit you guys for working together with the county the way that you have, and going the extra mile, so, so we really appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any questions or comments by council?
Any other questions we got, like Lieutenant? At PD? No, it's another dog.
I need to be a chief, but we, we all got, I'll be a PD.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Douglas. All right, uh, any public comments? Seeing that there isn't any, um, we move on to agenda item sixteen, which is consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, real estate, and our potential litigation in accordance to OC G A fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-three B. Um, is there a motion to enter into executive session? So moved. So do we have to? I mean, do we have anything to talk about? Um, I do want to, I'll kind of update the, uh, the... So moved? Yeah. Okay. Second. All right, um, all of the favor? All right.